West Tennessee's mobile banking gives you greater access to your money and more possibilities within your reach. It's easy to use, just follow a few simple steps and you can bank the way you live, on the go. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender, Member FDIC.
There is a form present, so we'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting. Before we approve the agenda, I have a couple of things that I need to add to that. We've got a copy here of the year-end quarterly federal budget.
No, this is regular general.
Okay, regular budget. That's what we need. Okay, also, we do need to get out to select a PON rep, which Shane has been serving that in the past. Okay.
What is this, on its own, this agenda, or what number?
This is the year-end quarterly. When we met last in July, our meeting came before we received it quarterly end of the year from Lance's office. It's already been approved by the county commission at their July meeting, but this one had not been included before in the past. And it should have been included in your minutes or in your notes, but it was left out unintentionally.
Yeah, and why does the same quarterly report that you get every quarter, it's just for the same quarter end in June 30th?
Okay, because I didn't know what it was.
It's the same, it's the same one you get every quarter, but it's for the June 30th.
It should have been included in your pack, but it was left out.
And also, I know while I was getting federal, although we were saying there was going to be some federal carels or funds, we didn't give you a notification of that, so we did need to, that is different in the agenda. And so with those changes, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make my request.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Any other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, just know that it is approved. So that's the first thing on your agenda.
I'd like to make my request, sir.
We have a motion to second to approve that, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, just know that it is approved. Do you want me to go over this to where?
All delegations are here, it's on behalf of Dr. Judd. The new Dr. J, the young Dr. J.
All right, so then now, we'll go to celebrations, and I'll let you start.
Well, this is my pleasure to recognize Dr. Melissa Judd. She's our, she's now a seasoned veteran of the middle school administrative role. We have, well, during this first year term, Dr. Judd, moving from an introductory or a, I'm trying to think of the right term, practitioner license, trying to move to a practitioner license as an administrator, has to work and provide some work, evidence of work that they're doing to build her leadership skills. And when I was reflecting on the work that she had, I thought it'd be a good thing to share out of a mentoring program that she started when she was a teacher and has continued that role in this mentoring program at the middle school as an administrator now. So she's got a few slides to share and a little bit of conversation about those slides.
He's a lot of fun. I feel like I'm, it's all the same, you start out, I'd rather not stay around like a child. I'd rather be with my people. I guess it's the teachers. While he's getting that ready, I do want to tell you all, thank you so much for the opportunity, especially to Mr. Kildare for the work. And as we get ready to talk about a little bit more in just a few minutes about the mentoring program that I have been privileged and humbled to get to help with, I also have members that are mentors to me in the room, and I brought one. This is my dad, Ron D., a lifetime mentor of mine, and this is my boss, the most awesome, excellent Tommy Kerr. I must leave that one in there, I still have to work for him. So I have an awesome boss, and I do appreciate him very much. And also, I want to thank you, Mr. Kildare, because things that I have not shared with him before, but he and Mr. Eads both, as I was a student, here through Chester County, especially in the high school, when they both came into the leadership roles there, I was very much humbled by the things that they taught me as a student. And even now, they both help mentor and coach me and teach me things and show me things, even from the way they did then, are still consistent and effective now. So I very much appreciate them. They helped me, especially Mr. Kildare, in different programs I've done, because I'm a nerd and I love school. Because of that, I've gone to school for a very long time. But in each of those phases, when I would have to do certain projects and I would not know what to do or were in turn, I would shoot this very nice man an email and say, "Mr. Kildare, can you please help me? I don't have any idea how to do this, and I know that you have done this, then maybe you can guide me through it." And bless his heart, and all the things that he already had going at the time in different roles, he very graciously is helping with that.
Well, doctors.
I definitely want to tell you that, thank you very much.
Dr. Judd, with your train's a favor, why don't you come over here and see if I can get this. I can't figure it out. It says, "Push source to get, switch the input," if I can't find. I'm looking for a source.
This should be on the remote.
It's on the remote. For the project?
It's on the project.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. This is the role that I've had great helping me out with this one.
Do you need me to?
Yes, I do. I sure do. If you want to.
I'll bet.
I ran with my head.
What's the plug you got?
I'm actually, it's, I'm, I'm searching. I'm searching. I'm searching. I'm searching. I'm searching. Maybe you'll find it.
The plug is right here. Does he have HMR?
Yes, sir. Sure, sure. Here's the source that you can use.
You gotta do the plug.
The function.
Say, as I said, mentor first, my reaction's right here.
Very good. Good job, Eric.
Hi. Thank you very much. Thank you. And as he said, this was something to begin. This was a passion that I had for school and community relations, and I discovered this in a class that I had for department in the graduate program. And I was also able to use this, and this is what spawned the idea for my research study when I was working on my doctorate at Merce State about two years ago. And then also, Mr. Kildare, being the awesome mentor that he is, he said, "Ms. Judd, why don't you think about doing this as your problem of practice to help advance your leadership license?" So I thought, well, that's great, if you can help me through this process, I will gladly do that exact thing. So just a brief little synopsis here, the first year we did this for my dissertation study, we had three specific goals. The first one was to increase student attendance, the second was to improve the I-ready reading and math scores, and the third was to decrease the negative behavior of first-class students. So I compiled the data, and I looked, and students that met, all three of those were invited to participate first, and then I just kind of went from there, those that met at least two, and then those that met at least one area. For the most recent year, this past year, my first year as an administrator, we decided, because of the state's passing of the new laws with attendance and with chronic absenteeism, we decided to go ahead and let's just focus on one goal. And so our main goal from this past year was to help increase attendance of students who were chronically absent, which was missing at least 10 or more days of the school year from the previous year. So in year one, we had 46 students who participated, and just some of the highlights of that, the most significant out of those three goals showed that the impact was on attendance. That was the biggest growth that we saw, so that was another reason why we decided to focus on attendance in year two. But one student, this was very important, it's very powerful to me, one student on what I would consider the pre-test, which was that year before, they ended the year with 34 absences on their student record. And then after the mentoring program was implemented, that child had zero beginning that year. So that was a humongous success for what I would consider an at-risk student. And then in the second year, we had almost double the amount of students participate, and that was kind of a unique problem to have, because I had more students than I had mentors. So I had to create, I had to be creative, and find new ways and reach out in additional ways to help other people get on board and to come in. So this is where a lot of that community relations came in. Instead of having the majority, or just all from free part of income to get credit, I was able to reach out through the Chamber of Commerce and other places who had supported our schools in the past, and I called friends like Mr. Glenn Harris and some of the others that do very well running their businesses here in town, and I said, "Hey, I have kids and I need you, and all I need is your time. And if you can send qualified people who meet a certain set of requirements, I would love for a child to feel like there's somebody else, other than just their educators or their families that care about them." And that's another, another goal led to something that Mr. Kirk and I talked about, is goals, as we began in administration together, what are some things that we want to see done in our schools that may not have been done in the past or could be better than what they currently are? And one of those was community relations. So as a result of mentoring, most of which were free hard-earned students, they were able to come and receive credit in their coursework. They had to do community service, or specific majors have to work with students under 18 in a school setting, and so they were able to come and receive credit in their coursework. So that was a win-win on both sides. Everybody got what they wanted and it didn't cost a dime. Free hard-earned, the athletics, many of the coaches contacted me and said, "Melissa, can I use this as our team's service project?" And so their entire team, they would all carpool and come on the same day, and they would meet with the kids. And so any kid that said, "When I grow up, I want to be a basketball player, I want to play baseball," I actually had college students who were athletes that played those sports come, and they would play those games with them out on the practice field area or in the gym. And so it gave those kids a sense of, somebody that does something that I love is coming to spend time with me, and they felt so special and so important. There was one student who was not very strong in writing, and she and her mentor decided, "You know what, let's work on that, but instead of just writing just to write, let's write something that you want." So they started writing a story based on the interest of that child, and by the end of that mentoring program, they wrote a story like a book together. And each week they alternated, and one of them would write a page, and then they would swap, and the next week they would come. So it was very interesting to see the different things that the kids did. But mentors, I guess this was a big surprise to me, it probably shouldn't have been, but I guess I didn't think about it on their end of it. But the college professors would require their students who served as the mentors to write a reflection piece at the end of their course, and their reflection was on the mentoring program, and all the things that they learned and how they grew. And it was so interesting to me to read through their reflections on how to improve it, and they would say things like, "I was terrified, I had no idea what I was doing, and I just showed up and I met this person on the spot, and I found out they have the same favorite game that I do." And we played, I don't know, the first three times we met, or just different special things that they have. This also met one of our leadership goals that I referenced earlier, this connected the middle school with different members and organizations in the community, and it also prompted discussions with the kids between them and their mentor about not just future, but future here, the things that we offer in Henderson. Different things of businesses that are right here, different things of even the college opportunities, they can go and take classes at the high school, Doolin-Roman, they can do Jackson State College, they can do all these different things, all right here. They don't have to go anywhere to be successful and to further beyond high school. So it was very interesting to see all the different components that came together for this. Just a couple of pictures I wanted to share. The young man on the left, his name is Christian, and if you look at his smile, that is the biggest smile, I didn't believe we saw of him that entire year. His mentor was a contractor from Gibson County, but a member of our chamber, and so he came and he was a race car driver on the weekend, and so he connected with my buddy Christian here, and he actually brought a race car to school one day, let him sit in it, let him rev the engine, took pictures, you know, and that child was never the same, never the same after that. In fact, the mentor contacted the mother outside of school and got permission, and the mother allowed him to take her child to a race with him and his own son. And so they even have other memories outside of the school mentoring program, but because of the program. And then on the right, we have one of our own fantastic Chester County graduates, and that's Miss Elizabeth Hibbit, the daughter of Lee and Sarah, and she was, I don't know if you're familiar with Making Music as much, but she was a hostess, which is one of the lead singers there, and she was one of the big stars of the show, and these two young ladies were the ones that she mentored. And so we got to take them into a little bit of her world when we took the kids to Making Music, and she was so excited to see them that we were able to arrange, we surprised the girls, they didn't know they were going to get to see her of close personal, we just told her that she was going to be singing, and so she surprised them and invited them up on the stage and got to take their picture with her in their spotlight. And they actually requested, both of those parents and Elizabeth requested to stay two years together as mentors and teammates, so that's also a unique relationship. But just some things that I learned, as I've kind of shared with you already, you never outgrow the need for a mentor. It doesn't matter how young you are, how old you are, where you are in your career, where you are as a parent, where you are as an adult, it doesn't really matter, but you never outgrow the need for needing someone else's advice or seeking an opinion or seeking support, which is partly why I asked mine to be here today, because I needed a lot of support. So you never outgrow the need for that. And at-risk students especially need that consistency. Sometimes children have the opportunity for things like this, some of them have supportive parents at home, some of them have programs that they're able to participate in, but as you know, as well as I do, others do not. And this program is able to help fill hopefully some of that gap to where the kids that come that may not feel that they are as good or at their best like others, this provides an avenue to where they're special. They get to do something that not every kid would do, and hopefully this will help them set goals and improve as they continue. Time was the only cost, which is something else, that most administrators might fear, it didn't cost a dime, it only would cost them time. So the mentors would come every other week for about 30 minutes, and they would play a game or be booked, whichever, whatever thing their student would want to do or be interested in. And so time was the only thing that was involved. Mentoring was an opportunity that connected our students with different adults and members, and especially the university here in our community, and the greatest blessing of all, and Mr. Kirk can, we both can attest to this, was seeing the kids grow. They, they're confident, and they can't wait to tell you, and my favorite thing would be, I could hear from my office with the door, I could just hear around the corner, Ms. Jennifer or Ms. Jamie would buzz down on it and ask the student, and the student would come up to the office and they'd say, "Is my mentor here? How do you say, is my mentor coming to meet with me today?" And we're so excited, and I thought, wow, to me, it's just a program that I'm helping with and providing an opportunity, but to that kid, that was a different thing. So, "I'm also coming with a little hidden agenda tonight to recruit you to be mentors." The only challenge, or the extra challenge, I would say this year, as we are planning and making preparation for this, is that due to some extra laws added for safety that are very much necessary, it is difficult, especially with so many college students that don't have an income or a job yet, because they're still full-time students, they can't afford to go get the background check done and all the things that are now required to work alongside our kids or in direct, in a direct relationship with our kids. So I'm working on some of that, that's the one challenge I haven't quite found the solution to yet, but I'm not going to give up very easily. But that's something that I would encourage somebody, we had some of our employees here in the districts that came over and served during their lunch hour. So it's just such a blessing to see that the kids have things that outside of here or that even myself and Mr. Kirk at school, we can't do that for every kid, but we can provide an opportunity to where they can. So I appreciate your time tonight, gentlemen, and if you all would like to be mentors and do that, I would love for these kids to have the same opportunities that I've been given. I don't know if you can warm your time, but I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Do you guys have any comments about our presentation? Good job.
I'm one.
Sure.
There are some states, do you think that that is a major thing that?
Yes, sir. I do. Because there were some kids, especially those that we would consider at-risk based on data or based on home situation, and to see those kids with their mentor was just priceless. And to see that little boy smile, that was so, he was so hard on himself, and he did struggle academically, and he did struggle socially even, because he just always felt inferior. And to see him like a rock star sitting in that race car, and to see him walking down the hall with his mentor, he walked taller and prouder than I've ever seen him walk. So it was very powerful.
Thanks. Dr. Judd, Mr. Kirk, I want to thank y'all for y'all's leadership every day. I know it's not a one day, it's not the days, you're there every day, and I appreciate you all, thank you very much. All right, at this time, we hear a virtual selection of the board chairman and vice chair, so this time, I want to turn that over to Mr. Bingham for the selection of the chairman.
Okay, the floor is now open for nomination of board chairman.
I nominate Ron Moore.
You want?
Go ahead. You want it? I nominate Ron Moore for our chairman.
Any other nominations? All this paper, sir. Condolence, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys, I feel appreciated. The next thing we're going to do is select the vice chairman, and I'll open the floor for nominations for that.
I nominate the wife, Bingham.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Bingham, any other nominations? All right, then, all in favor of Mr. Bingham being vice chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Well, congratulations to you, sir. All right, we also at this time, we need to elect a Tennessee legislative representative, and Shane's been doing that in the past.
I'd like to mostly nominate Shane again, for that prestigious job.
All right, we have a motion to second for Shane to be our PON representative. Any other discussions, any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, congratulations, Shane, at that race.
Little extra, extra, you take it.
And next thing on our agenda is going to be the Tennessee radio assessment, and Mr. Kildare will kind of turn that over to you, sir.
As you've seen from the, from the board agenda notes that I provided you, that Mr. Randall Fenimore was going to be here to do a presentation with this, I provided for you, gentlemen, four different documents, review of all these going over. The first document was a press release that the commissioner of education released, you see the dates, July 19th, spoke about what the state results were, what the things that were considered positive, the things that will be the focus of attention at the state level to work on. Very little was mentioned with the state's message about the glitches in the computer internet accessibility. The connectivity was an issue in Chester County, and I have expressed that repeatedly to those who have listened. Mary Dunbar was the last one to listen, was earlier this week. The commissioner's representative, we had a meeting today, and the representative, Evan Kramer, was available, and did, in his very opening message, say, "We apologize for the connectivity issues." Was that sporadic around the state? Because I know Madison County was proud of their scores. Well, I don't know, I didn't talk to Dr. Jones about what their connection. It was on the news tonight. I know that there were multiple districts who dealt with connectivity issues, part of Haywood County did, I know that, Haywood County. The issues that as they were expressed, they first thought it was a conspiracy or some type of, the joke was some Russian got involved. But then legitimately, they attempted to say that there was a dump truck that had actually struck a fiber optic line in Knox County, but then when reports were coming in from different districts that weren't impacted by that location, that were having connectivity issues with the testing, but not connectivity issues with the internet, then that didn't get as much of a groundswell of support that that was a legitimate issue. The issue that we realized that was shared toward the end of our testing window, was a function with the state testing company that was, the function was called text-to-speech for those students that struggled to read, it would provide an audio of the questions being read, and in the fall, the company who did the testing had a voice that the state department thought was too robotic, that the kids were struggling to understand what it meant. They asked Questar to find another option for that text-to-speech that was more human-like, like a Siri-like. What they found was a, well, they found a company, and I don't remember the details of what the company's name was, I think it's a common name, but I'm not sure, but the company who had that, Questar, had to purchase that license with it, and it needed connectivity to be able to function with our test. So at the end of that, what they claimed was, was the new text-to-speech that was provided to the spring testers, which all of our kids at the high school were tested online in the spring, the connectivity with the loss and the gain of the signal was because of that additional text-to-speech function that was purchased. Once they lifted that, and the way they lifted it was they gave directors of schools one afternoon about 5:30, an email saying, "It's not going to be available anymore." Now, that was a major change in testing, because instead of having kids with headsets plugged into their laptops where it would speak to them, we had to then change everybody's schedule, and for the proctors who were assisting teachers with the test, they had to then become readers. So we made that adjustment, our kids at the high school functioned better, and of the results that we have, and you can reflect on it, our geometry, which was the only test that came following, the text-to-speech being dropped. That was one group out of all of our testing at the high school, that they claimed there was no connectivity issues when they tested. All the other tests, every other subject at the high school had connectivity issues to where they would start in the morning, 8:00 to 8:30, some would in the same classroom be able to test on time, others were able to start the test but unable to finish because of connectivity, and then still some others in the same class were not even able to get on after over an hour of effort. So what it would cause is the morning schedule of testers would have to come back in the afternoon and adjust. So that was a perpetual one day behind, that become two days, three days, and it got to the point, teachers were frustrated, students were frustrated, families were frustrated, even legislators who were involved with the political air of the day were frustrated. And they were making changes in law that we had realized, that they have removed some of the requirements for that test, the 1718 test, it counts for or against anybody, well, it can count for if it's to the benefit, but it won't count against you, both at the school level accountability, the district level accountability. However, we still have to record the data, that's still data used to predict success, areas of focus for improvement, and also T-bos, which represents the growth that you experience from one year to the next, still uses that data. Unfortunately, our kids and our teachers, out of frustration, and administrators out of frustration, were really the rally crowd was just getting done, because they had learned through social networking that the test is not going to count against them. So unfortunately for us, a year's worth of hard work with our teachers and our students ended up, the last three weeks of our regular school year, with a lot of frustration. ended up, the last three weeks of our regular school year, with a lot of frustration and a lot of issues that was nobody's fault in the building. We actually had somebody from Questar come out, the company brought a company man out, and as he was saying, well, it's an internet issue to Dusty Carroll, who was making sure that our hardware and connectivity was legitimate in our school. He was showing him with his phone, I've got connectivity to our internet right now, and you're having the problem getting on your test. So he was able to show him in real time, standing right next shoulder to shoulder, it was not a connectivity with our service, it was coming from Questar. But again, through all of that cycle of blame game, they reached to the point of saying it's that text to speech function. And when they dropped that, we did not have any issues with connectivity. The only test that was positive with that, though, was the geometry test. So again, as you see, the second page that I provide is the achievement results in comparison with the state for math, language arts, science, and social studies. The third sheet that you have, that's the colorful copy, that's Randall's growth model, where you, he'll speak to that. And then the final sheet is a letter that I generated to the commissioner of education from a, a meeting and conference call that we had, where she offered support if we were wanting to receive her support. So I sent her this letter, wanting some assistance with how to message this to our community to help explain. Her answer to me was, well, I've sent it to you. So that was the extent of the support I had. The ownership of our issues, it was hard to find people who were really to stand in the gap and accept responsibility. Today, Evan Kramer from the state department, again, like I said, started the message today by saying, I'm sorry, on behalf of the state department. So that was at least some encouragement, because we can make growth from that. We can learn from these mistakes if we're willing to accept that we've made them, so...
Ken, does it honor you?
Yes, sir.
So I have the exact same plates that they have on them. But when you look at achievement, just quickly, you can look, you can look for yourself and see how we compare to the state, and by and large, in most instances, you're going to find that we compare favorably to the state. When you look at high school scores, Mr. Kilsner spoke about it extensively, but those scores do not reflect where our students truly are. I'm, I'm pretty confident about that. There's no doubt that we need to make major improvements in our high school, and even from junior high up through high school math program, because that's a period of years that we see that and that tells a fact. But for instance, in language arts at the high school, we've been among the top in the state, very strong. We dropped 15 points on this year's test. That just doesn't make sense. It's the same teacher, same kind of students, and we dropped 15 points. I think that was primarily a result of the testing problems. Hopefully, in the future, we'll be prepared to kind of approach it in a more positive manner rather than getting frustrated and say, hey, we've got to revise, because it's always going to count for something. It was a small part that it didn't count for. Really big highlights in 3-5 language arts, grades 3 through 5, language arts, if you rank all the states for achievement, all the districts in the state for achievement, Chester County ranks 22nd out of 141 in the state. And you say, well, that's pretty good, but 22nd. Well, you've always got to remember that you've got a multitude of districts, Marable, Lakeland, Williamson County, there's these districts that are nothing but fluent people, and they're going to pretty well be in the top 10 no matter what. It's just, it's just a socioeconomic thing that comes about. So the 22nd was very good, and I don't know, Mr. Kurt may want to get up and sing law himself on this, because in 3-5 math, which in reality was only fifth grade, because they, the test was a little different this year for the, for the third and fourth graders, they didn't have as many highs, but in 3-5 math, we ranked number nine in the state. And that makes two years in a row in 3-5, not math, but science. 3-5 science, we ranked number nine in the state out of 141. And that's two years in a row that we've been in the top 10. We had a big debacle and fall from number seven last year. I want that addressed tomorrow. We want to get back up there to number six. Now, that is, that is truly, truly outstanding, because again, you're talking about there's nine or 10 districts in this state that every year are going to be at the top of the list because they have only affluent people living in their districts, and they have college degrees with all the parents, and all the research shows that. Looking at growth, it is colorful, but it's put together, and the colors tell the tone. You can get a one to a five. You are expected on growth to get a three. Remember, growth is taking each student, looking at through a formula, what they are expected to achieve within one year, and then comparing what they really didn't achieve with that one year based on the test to what they were expected to achieve. And in doing that, if you get a three, which is green on this sheet, you have met, you were within the margin of error of what they said you were supposed to do. If you are a light blue, you did one standard deviation better than what you were expected to do. If you are dark blue, you did at least two standard deviations better than what you were expected to do. At the elementary grades, we have a huge number of areas where we are in the blue. We do have some reds at the elementary levels. Westchester had a, had a down year in math. I'm not real quick to make excuses, but they had a teacher that I think is a very promising teacher, but her first year, second year teaches, first year teaches third grade math. So she was getting used to that. And then there are others, they only have two math teachers in third grade out there. The other one was on maternity leave for a portion of the year. So those definitely had some negative effects on it, but they'll be working and getting that better. At the middle school, their greatest problem, at the middle school, their greatest problem was in language arts. That is an anomaly. This is the first year that that has been true. The other years, we have scored at least a three in that situation. So I'm sure that they're working and looking. I know that they are adopting some more strategies that are recommended by the state this year that they're implementing, and we're hoping to see that bounce back.
Mr. Fenimore?
Yes, sir?
May I address the board?
Yes, you may.
I want you all to know that I am aware that this is the first year that we have not performed in that area. But I also want you to know that we are not making excuses for that. We have really sat down, looked at some of the reasons, and really made an effort to not make excuses, because to me, an excuse is something that excuses me from taking responsibility. So looking at facts, last year, some of our practices did not build the reading stamina that was necessary to perform on this test. A lot of the reading passages are several pages long. Students are required to read those, as well as answer questions about that. And in our effort to help them last year, we failed in getting them to that point where they could comfortably read and not just kind of give up after a little while. Any of you that have grandchildren or children that don't enjoy reading, you know the frustration that can come when a passage is, is pretty long. And so this year, we're making efforts to make sure we start small and gradually get to where we're supposed to get. So by the time the test rolls around again, we'll be able to stand up and be that three, hopefully four, and really hopefully five in growth, because that's what my teachers are capable of. And I encourage them each and every day to live up to the potential and the reputation they gained over the years that they've been in this.
And again, if you put the two sets of data together, seems almost contradictory, but it's because of the way these things fall. Remember, in 3-5 language arts, we are number 22 in the state, but we did not get the growth this year that we have been getting out of those students. So our students through that level are still doing well in language arts. It's just we need to get a little more growth, and they've got some good strategies to come up against that. At the junior high, we're working diligently. We have devoted more resources this year than ever in the history of Chester County to the junior high, both in giving them more personnel, some more non-professional personnel to work with them. They've got some more administrators, so that the principal will be able to be in classes and be coaching and be working more. We have placed a full-time language arts coach in the building to work every day with teachers in order to help them to improve their scores, and we are expecting some movement toward improvement next year. The train moves slow when you've got these kind of changes come. And we're looking for some improvement. We're not expecting to jump to a five next year, but we're looking for it to come up to, to a, hopefully to a three, but looking for improvement on both the achievement level and on the growth levels, which one will lend to the other. At the high school, again, our English, quite honestly, was the most disappointing to me, because I really believe we have been stars at English compared to the state. And I really believe it was the testing that got us there. In math, we have not been stars, and we're, we're, we've got some things, it's kind of like when they talk about the senate election, one party has an advantage over the other the way the numbers fall. Well, the way the numbers fall on students this year, the high school has some advantage in algebra one that they haven't had for a few years. So the way we've realigned some things, so that's going to help them some. We've been bringing in the math expert from Southwest Core. She's been in the classroom, she's taught to them, and she's going to continue to come. We've also brought in the language arts expert that's going to be going to every school to go through and just help us look for ways for key things that we can improve on at every level for language arts. So we're working diligently in those areas. Does anyone have any questions? It's a whole lot at once, and it takes, you wouldn't believe it, but this is a really, really, really condensed version of what data that we give. It, you look at the first thing you get, it gives you a headache immediately, but it's been brought down to the nuts and bolts on, on these sheets. Thank you.
Randall spoke to that. I mean, when you do have, and again, we're not saying that, as Mr. Kirk said, this is not an excuse, but it's the reality of it. When you have moms and dads who are, who have degrees or at least understand that responsibility and hope that their children will continue, the expectations are much higher and realization is usually higher. It also impacts the people who are working in those districts, the teachers, the educators. And again, not to say anything negative about ours, because we can put ours against anybody in the state. But when we work, we need to be conscientious of where we are. What is the expectation that our kids have to demonstrate when it's test time? All of these results and all of the status, whether, you know, you read the top 10 list, all of that status comes from test scores of the students. So there has to be a transfer of knowledge and skill sets from the teachers to the students, and it needs to be able to use a common, or it needs to stick when those kids are testing so that they can demonstrate what their teachers have been teaching. I want to say compliments. I haven't read it yet, but I've heard that the article is very well written, and I appreciate that, because that will help perpetuate the message that we want to say to our community. We're still a great school district with great people that work every day with our kids. I don't want to let this one test, regardless of whether it's a online connectivity glitch or whether it's the results of the lower grades that did not get impacted by that connectivity, to think that because of these scores not being where we would hope that our efforts and their work performance is subpar. It's not. Everybody in the state is still having to address concerns. Everybody has things that they can do well and compliment and reward, but there's also things that have to have the attention to improve on. And we just have the opportunities and the support of the Southwest Core, who are diligently willing and wanting to work with us. We have a great relationship with them, and I see us getting trajectory moving up from here for the benefit of our kids.
Did I understand you to say that, or did I hear it, that some districts weren't affected as much?
Madison County evidently wasn't, because they were proud of their school.
Why not?
We depend upon, now, some of the school districts with the connectivity issue had their devices hardwired. The hardwiring devices would be, we could do the same, but we would have to test in smaller groups and test like in a library setting, where in that media area, you have them all wired in. We felt like the best strategy for anybody testing is to test in a very familiar setting where they normally test during the school year, with their classroom, with their teachers. So their structure had to depend upon the connectivity, the wireless connectivity. We had the bandwidth. In fact, we have the devices in our facilities that are well beyond that. But, but again, we didn't foresee that this text to speech being the issue that, and it took them nearly three weeks before they discovered that, and the testing window only lasted for three weeks. We have several that was doing the text to speech part of it. There were some, yes. Now, I don't know about several. I didn't get a head count, but I do know it was impacting to some of our kids, yeah.
I would just like to comment, I agree with Troy. I just think we've got a great system. I think our teachers work hard every day. The way I look at this is these tests should be a learning tool and something that we can use going forward to help make improvements, but you know, we're not something to say, well, we didn't do this, we didn't do this, if there was problems with it. I'm not, Mr. Kirk, it's not necessarily an excuse, but it's a truth. And as far as I'm concerned, use this as a learning tool and us go forward with improvements.
Probably AT&T. Or A-AS.
Uh, AT&T.
Mr. Kilsner?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a two-part article, so we couldn't continue because we couldn't.
All right, very good.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Fenimore. Appreciate it. All right, next thing, last meeting we talked about, we did take any action about the... Okay, Mr. Kilsner brought to my attention, I skipped number six, and that is about staff positions, and I think what we probably want to hear from Mr. Eads on this, because I think he is the one that's really been dealing with the problem. Really, do you like to address that fourth place?
Last two years, I go on my third year in the bus transportation department at the bus shop, just trying to address a lot of things that over, you know, that I've just noticed that, you know, the last few years that have allowed the bus shop works as we don't work. It just, if we take it as it comes, of course, you know, we have staffing issues with bus drivers, but on any given day where buses are out morning or afternoon, the way the structure's been over the years is we have one shop foreman who is the dispatcher, the phone answer, and anything else that comes that way. If a bus has issues, it has to roll back in. I've sort of been in the second demand of that, and there at 6:00 in the morning, and then stay until 5:00 if I have to, just to make sure where we can find some communication out. Due to the driver shortage, our bus foreman has to drive a bus on a regular basis, which then leaves me in the shop, and there are times where the radio's going, the phones ringing, the drivers are meeting, and I'm having to go from one to the other and hold just a second driver. So it's, it's just really created a communication issue, and plus, with that and not having the foreman there, if a bus has an issue out on the route, there's really not much I can do about it without two people at the shop and working to assist. So this is really, it was a dispatcher, but it can, you know, it's really more, there's a lot of communications go through, they, things that can happen during a route, it can get on the wrong bus. And you have to know how to get on our student information center, you have to call the school, get the parent phone number. There's a lot of things that go into it, that somebody there, and it's a three-hour position, I'd ask him for an all-day position, just something that somebody is there, they can provide some consistent, somebody in the morning, somebody in the evening. they can provide some consistent, somebody in the morning, somebody in the evening. As they get better, they're gonna be able to route the buses where they're supposed to be, make the phone calls, answer the phone, and answer the radio, and handle it that way so that we can be freed up to do other things as they come to things like this.
You can find somebody that can do that for $9 an hour for an hour?
If somebody, it would have to be somebody in system, nobody out there that we can't. But there, there, there are a lot of, of people that could probably do it well if they only have like 5-hour workloads.
You know, we've already got him in the system part-time. He used to do it all the time, Mike Tickner. And the mowing has got to be slowed down now. Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, yes. But yes, that, I mean, somebody like in his capacity...
And I mean, he's done that.
Correct, that could work. But it had to be for you guys to approve since it's a position that we don't have. We were looking for somebody on a part-time basis that is already working but not receiving any benefits. That $9 plus the benefits would help. Because, you know, Brit's got more responsibilities than just being at the bus shop for half a day. And, uh, you know, with the, the new capital projects that we've got going around, it, it would be helpful for me to have him to be more equitable with his other duties.
I mean, I've just not thought of it. Mike is, he used to do that.
He already knew what he was doing. I didn't think twice about that one.
Yeah, he did it several years, I don't know.
Uh, would anyone like to make a motion that we do have this new position?
I'd make a motion, would I?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion, second. We do have a new position for this to help with the bus shop. Any other discussions, comments?
And we're not working those hours flat, and it's...
Mm-hmm, other hours. And it's, and mowing time is gonna be diminished.
Yeah, I make a, subscribe.
Correct.
Well, any other discussion? Uh, so we will have a new position, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't know, but we will, we'll take that. And so we will be able to give us these two things for that.
We'll reach out to suggestions and, uh, hopefully have a position soon. Thank you, Troy.
Alright, then the next thing we, that I started by, you know, was that our last meeting we talked about, we didn't really take any action on the, uh, program. We paid bonuses for teachers that didn't have the absentee's, but I believe Mr. Kildare stated that we really did think it made that much improvement, so, uh...
I thought we just discontained because it was for 6 months trial basis.
Back in October, the vote was that we were tried for 6 months, but it came through with the board action to do that. And we talked about it last month, but nobody took any action to end it. I made a recommendation based on the results, that the, the funding that went out, even though we had some reduction in expenditures for subs, it was not impacted by our incentive plan. We talked about it, but there was no action taken to end it, so that's...
I could motion we discontinue it then, after the fact.
I have a motion, second. We do end that program because we didn't think beneficial. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't know.
But it is changing, sorry.
Thanks, sir.
That money, for sale, I appreciate it.
Thanks, and, yeah, thanks for the...
Doug, gentlemen, you see that I provided a narrative around the funding that came in from the final BEP numbers, that's the July totals. Uh, that's the breakdown in comparison to the June estimate. Remember, we received our first estimate in April, and we had another estimate in May and June. Each one is slightly different from the one preceding of the 4 components. You see the breakdown per component with the comparison between the July actual, and this is the revenue that comes in as compared to the last June estimate. So that shows you, gentlemen, where those dollars come from. And I included also with that the local contribution that's expected from our own county commission. I've got pictures here of the new addition. The cafeteria is, uh, we have the furniture already ordered. Cafeteria tables are in.
Tables are already in, put together waiting, chairs are waiting tomorrow.
Okay. So we have 9, excuse me, 96 chairs with 16 tables that will accommodate those. That'll give us approximately quantity of 100 to be in there, which is what we allow for that room. If you see, the, uh, the flooring's already done. Now, we still don't have media sources, but we've talked about, uh, installing a sewage wall. The wall opposite from the windows and the doors that go back into the...
Old cafeteria.
Old cafeteria. We're gonna put a flat screen, a certain size flat-screen TV that they'll use for, well, for projection and for PowerPoints. So it'll be set opposite the sun, so hopefully we won't have the glare from anything on that side. Uh, flat-screen TV, you don't have to worry about additional speakers because the speakers have enough quality in the device itself. You notice if you've driven by the new addition out of East, I walked that path. They've got the blocks around, the landscaping block type of textured block is up and they're breaking up also. So expectations are for the cafeteria addition. It could be in a matter of a couple of weeks if we finally get the notice. And again, it's a fire marshal requirement, but they're gonna break this job into 2 parts and give us the opportunity to go to occupancy with the cafeteria addition soon. This language that I've got here for you, gentlemen, is coming from the, from the fire marshal. They inspect it on a weekly basis and gives an update. Um, still expectation is for the, uh, East addition to be done around Christmas time. And Norris, we do have one change order. Here's the one change order. And it's something that we, it was a misrepresentation between the architect and us when we talked about the pay slot. He was, and he being Jeb on, thought that we were just setting up mock furniture, mock appliances. He didn't realize that we were actually setting up the real deal.
Yeah, we thought we were gonna furnish it.
Right. But no, he actually did not provide the wiring to support that. So we had to do a change order with the wiring for, I don't think we had enough wiring circuit to run for the oven. But we had to, again, all that was done this past week. Plus, we added new cabinetry that is head-level to store the things like the washing powders and other items. So that's been added to the plan. Uh, Jeb just sent that out today, in fact, the updates. So all that has been worked into the plans and, uh, if you've not been out there in the East section yet, it really looks nice.
The pay slot is huge.
It is huge, it is huge. It's 11, all of that roughly is 11,000 square feet being added to the campus. It is, it's quite a massive structure. It's gonna be, and it's gonna be well-used. I mean, and of course, Tommy is over there grinning from ear to ear because that's where his wife is gonna be spending a lot of her time as she is leading the charge with our pay slot.
We had a fire marshal visited today. I don't know if they tell you, but we had an alarm issue. Semplex put a panel in there when they tested the fire alarm the other day for it did not fire in the west hall extended.
Okay.
Semplex was there all day today looking at it. Actually, the fire marshal was there to probably give the approval in that system. So Semplex is having to work through it. They might have to work at their school sometimes because the guy's gonna have to fire the horn a lot to figure out the problem and get it fixed before the fire marshal will.
You're saying on the west side?
The west side is having the issue.
Okay.
It's not ringing, there's not firing at all out there. And it's because of something that had, they upgraded the panel and the way when they did it, west hall extended, it's, uh, it's gonna take a while to trace it back, so...
Is that gonna impact cafeteria addition in, as far as getting, getting it approved?
Yes, but it might not, he might get taken care of more than where I've got where it is. It was happened today.
Yeah, um, some have asked, Matt Locky is working still on the roof. They, they have done from east to west along the main, uh, roof line of the middle school, and they're working back toward cafeteria along the gym side. Uh, as I told Norris, the, the heat from the last few weeks has shortened their workdays, getting there earlier, not working a whole day. So I talked to them first of this week and the first of last week to kind of get an update from them. It's, they're, they expect to be done soon, but they want to put a tag at the end of it just yet. But the work and the effort, I've listened to some other directors talk about the use of that TPO roof has been a real benefit as far as the labor less. When you don't have to remove the previous roof line, you can just put that on top. So it saved a lot of funding for the labor cost of removing that portion first. So we're, we're in good shape with those. Westchester's in good shape.
Does anyone on the board have anything else that I could bring up?
Everything smooth at west right now.
I can share with you my notes, but yes, after that first day, I can share with you what they have done, uh, that that child has been coming to west. The teacher of record in that class has been communicating to the parents of the students in her class, showing them the fact that the kids are learning and are safe and are protected and are learning and enjoying this session.
Anything else?
Anyone, anyone do anything there about that tonight?
Oh, yeah, uh, once you speak to that Dr. J, I...
No, no, no.
Yes.
You're old, Dr. J.
I didn't mean to say, did I say old? Sorry, I didn't mean to say... Oh, okay, you're, got you.
Uh, no, I've got the 20th of that month, it never comes up, me, but, and I, we're gonna be, we're gonna be... I've gotta be a big date one with, if I get promoted, but any other, any other...
They say once county commission makes one a 10, I think, in September.
Having, uh, say... 20, say early, 27.
27th, the, the week that they, you'll be back for them.
What about you, Shane?
Uh, no, that's, uh, the Broadway, me and all the quartet at the Marketew Festival.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't do it during the Marketew, no?
Do it the 13th. 13th is the week before, 13th?
13th, yeah.
Is that okay with you, Mr.? We do the 13th.
I would, uh, I'd like to put on the agenda for next month our superintendent's contract.
Hand out to discuss and contract the 6th day. It'll be on the next meeting, it'll be September the 13th. Troy, hopefully we can, we can, we can post it on the building, we're supposed to do it website, and then we can put that...
It's 8:00 in the newspaper, yeah. But I would like to send it there.
So we'll discuss that then on the 13th. Anybody else have anything?
Make a motion, what, John?
Second.
I have a motion, second.
I'm ready to leave.
All in favor, say aye.
Uh, I...
Can you get a turn?